With the invocation by the Reverend Randy Singer, pastor of Trinity Church, if everyone would rise for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Randy, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's good to be here. I've got a couple of pastors back there telling me to keep it short or they're gonna give me the hook, so I'll try to do that.
They're gonna rate you.
Let's pray. Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation, by prayer and petition, make your requests known to God with thanksgiving. Lord, we do that tonight, we are thankful for our leaders here, we're thankful for this city in which we live. I'm just really grateful to be governed by leaders that truly love this city. Your word tells us we should pray for the peace and prosperity of our city, and so I do that tonight, because if the city prospers, we will prosper too. We pray for its health, not just economically, but also spiritually, and we pray for unity in this city, Lord. I pray that you'll search the hearts of our council members tonight, help them not to be anxious, give them godly courage and God-given ability to rise above political agendas or any kind of animosity, and to think only about the welfare of the city. We ask these things in the name of our mighty Savior. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, unto the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Randy, thank you for coming down. We have the roll call. Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Have a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Do you have a motion for approval of the minutes of August 4th, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes.
And council, we do have a couple of things that I think are very, very good before we really get into the meat of the meeting tonight, and I would ask Ray Borkman to come up from Beach Fellowship, and the reason I'm looking at my notes, Steve cannot be here today, but he sent Josh Kicker, is that correct, Josh?
Yes.
You know, council, as you know, we have been raising money for the homeless to offset some of the expenses on our major housing resource center that will be under construction into this year or first of next year, which this city so desperately needs. What's gonna make this facility so special is seeing not only the support from our citizens for their taxes, but to have the support of our faith-based community doing what they're doing. And with the magnitude of what Beach Fellowship and Wave Church did, I felt there should be special recognition and a plaque given, and I would ask Ray if I could give this for Beach Fellowship, and thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you very much.
That was only $130,000, and if I could give you yours, $50,000 from Wave Church.
Wow.
You know, council, I think everyone at this table supports me when I say this city is the greatest city in the world, but let me tell you, having that type of support in our community, doing this type of stuff, really reinforces that we are the greatest city in the world, and we're really gonna make a difference, we already making a difference in homelessness, but we're gonna get this thing where we're gonna become a model across the country for what we're trying to do. Fellas, would you like to say anything?
It's an honor and privilege to partner with the city council and Mr. Mayor with this visionary leadership and continue to see great opportunities, great like it is.
Thank you, Ray.
Just like to echo that, thanks for your unanimous approval years ago, you listened to hundreds of stakeholders that came to you and presented what are our needs and what are the options, and you made the decision, so thanks so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming down, appreciate you taking the time. Another very special event or thing that we're getting ready to do is, I think last year, you remember, I attended the Mayor's Youth Leadership Inaction Lunch, and I was so impressed with the speaker that I asked her to come make her presentation to city council. I must admit that I did not, I got there after the speech this time, but I heard so many spectacular things about it that I wanted to make sure the council heard it. And Daniel Young, if you would come forward, it's so good to see you here, and we welcome you. If you could tell a little bit about yourself before you give the speech, I'd really appreciate it.
Of course. So I moved to Virginia Beach with my mom and my two younger sisters the summer before fifth grade. I graduated from Ocean Lakes Elementary School and Kim's Landing Magnet School, and in 2003 from Princess Anna High School. I'm 30 now. I'm currently living in the New York area because my wife, Carolina Farrosa Young, is doing a doctoral program at Columbia, but we're planning to come back down to Virginia just as soon as we can.
Well, we look forward to you getting back.
I appreciate it.
We're gonna put you to work, but thank you for taking the time to do this tonight.
Certainly.
Please.
Thank you very much to Mayor Sessoms and to the members of city council for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here because back in May, I had the opportunity to give the keynote address at the 2015 Best All-Around Awards Ceremony. That program is run out of the Youth Opportunities Office, which is headed by Ms. Barbara Brynton, who is here this evening. The purpose of the Best All-Around Program is to recognize young people and businesses and other organizations that work to make Virginia Beach the great city that it is. And when I had the chance to speak at the keynote ceremony, I talked to the honorees that day about their tremendous ability to empower people and to inspire them and to make this community better. Tonight, thanks to the invitation of the mayor, I have a somewhat different purpose, and that purpose is simply to say to you, the elected representatives of the citizens of Virginia Beach, thank you. I think it is too rare that we take an opportunity to pause and to express our gratitude to people who have nurtured and shaped us over the years, and for me, tonight, this is one of those moments. The mayor asked me to talk a little bit about myself. I grew up as a typical Virginia Beach kid, what did that mean? It meant that I went on field trips to see lighthouses, I was dragooned to carry buckets of water to build sand sculptures at the Neptune Festival, when I talked to my friends on the phone, I would periodically pause while jets roared overhead during the conversation. But growing up in Virginia Beach meant something else for me, which is that at a very young age, I had the opportunity to become involved in the civic life of this city. There are many things that make this city, as I know Mayor Sessoms likes to say, the best in the world. I think one of them, and maybe the most important one, is the extent to which the city invests in the lives of its young people. For me, that began the summer between seventh and eighth grade. I had the opportunity to attend Virginia Beach Leadership Workshop. For those of you who have never had the opportunity to visit a leadership workshop, it is an amazing program. The middle schools and high schools from around the city select their elected student leaders and other leaders in the schools, and they send them to Virginia Wesleyan College for several days of leadership training. It is all staffed by Virginia Beach City Public Schools teachers and recent graduates. It is completely free for the students who attend. I think there are very few programs like it anywhere in the country. One of the memories that I'd like to share from workshop with you all is the keynote session, and I remember the keynote session because Mayor Obendorf spoke. And I was very young, this was 1998, and I don't remember much, but I remember that she said she was proud of us, and that what we did in our schools and in the city mattered, and that we were making a difference in our communities. I think a lot of us have been thinking about Mayor Obendorf and her legacy, but man, let me tell you, that made me feel big, and it put me on a certain path. Very shortly thereafter, I applied for and was accepted to the Mayor's Leadership Council for Young People. Very shortly after that, I was elected the inaugural president of Youth Leaders in Action. Youth Leaders in Action was then 25 ethnically, geographically, economically diverse students, they were picked from all over the city of Virginia Beach. It was run out of the nascent Youth Opportunities Office, and the idea was to create one group of kids that could sort of speak for the interests of young people in this city. Now, in order to tell the story of why growing up here was so important, I have to speak personally for a moment, which is simply to say this. My family, like a lot of families, I think, lived from time to time, paycheck to paycheck, and the thing about living paycheck to paycheck is that when things go south, they can go south very quickly, and that happened with my family. We lived in a nice house in a nice suburb in Dam Neck, six miles from here. When things got tight, we moved into a less nice house that we didn't own, but we rented. And not long after that, my mom and my stepfather got divorced, and going from a two-income to a one-income family is like being inside of a balloon, where the air gets let out all of a sudden, the walls close in very, very quickly, and they did on me when I was in middle school and high school. That story isn't unique. Before I spoke in May, I looked at the statistics in Old Dominion University's most recent report on the economic state of the region, and according to that report, in 2006, there were 644 foreclosure filings in this region. In 2008, there were 6,000, in 2010, there were 12,000. Disruption and dislocation on that kind of scale are very difficult to imagine, but I can imagine it in part because I went through it. And what I want to tell you tonight is part of what got me through a rough patch was the fact that I was involved in this community because of the opportunities that people like you made available to me. Because if things were stressful at home, at Youth Leaders in Action, there was an event to plan, or a grant to write, or a conference to attend, all of those events in a very real way were a lifeline to me, and I think they're a lifeline to a lot of young people in this city. And they completely changed my life, and I don't mean that hyperbolically, in part because I was civically active in this community, I was able to win a Jefferson Scholarship to attend the University of Virginia, and there, I was able to win full tuition scholarships to attend Yale Law School and Harvard Kennedy School of Government. All of that starts here, which means in large measure, it starts in this room, and with the people who represent the citizens of this city and create the opportunities for young people to get involved. And it's not necessarily all civic engagement programs and youth leadership opportunities, sometimes it's just basic needs. At the presentation in May that I was fortunate enough to keynote, I had the opportunity to sit next to Bill Boyce, who I had not met before. Some of you probably know that he was involved very early on in the Parks and Recreation Department, one of the things he helped do was to create the summer program and the after-school programs through the Parks and Rec Department. I used those, my family used those, there were many times when we would not have been able to afford childcare. And so I asked Mr. Boyce, because I participated in these programs when I was young, where did the idea come from? And he said, well, we sort of got a group of people together, and we did a quality-of-life survey of the residents of Virginia Beach, and one of the top things that came up was that families were worried about the expense of childcare, so we started a program. In other words, the city saw a need among its residents, this is not dissimilar from the presentation that preceded me, Mr. Mayor, about homelessness. The city saw a need among its residents, and it stepped in, and now I'm standing here, and I think those things are connected. So tonight, I simply want to urge you, as members of city council, to continue supporting civic engagement and youth leadership programs. I want you to think boldly and creatively about what you can do to empower the young people of this city. We live in an era of difficult politics with increasing hostility and tightening budgets, but when you're young, it often takes very, very little to shift a life a few degrees this way or that way, and I know that because I lived it. So tonight, I have the chance quite simply to say thank you to each of you to your faces. I have the chance to say thank you for all you do for this city, and I have the chance, Mr. Mayor, to say thank goodness I grew up in Virginia Beach, Virginia. Thank you very much.
Daniel.
Thank you for coming by. I like your tie.
Daniel, we thank you for coming by, and I know I see Tony Arnold back there from the schools, he needs to take back a message so they continue to do a good job. Take that note, Tony. And Barbara, and your entire team over in Parks and Recreation, God bless each and every one of you for what y'all do, I mean, it's spectacular, the amount of time that Barbara and her team spend to make sure these things are done well, and the beauty, not to get too long on this thing, the beauty is, these tasks these young people are asked to do, they're a task, it requires work, it requires, it's not something that's just handed to you, and I'm just so proud of the way the direction of this has been going for so many years, and so we thank you as well. Daniel, you make us proud. Okay, we'll now go to the consent agenda there, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Your Honor, I want you to do the public hearing, I have one speaker.
But that was in favor.
Yes, but we told her it's not on the agenda to be voted on, it was just for the public hearing.
Okay, open a public hearing on forever home sanctuary.
Lynette Bakowski. Yes. It's for Elsie Grace Warrior. Yes, that's one we're calling.
No, I said for home, forever home sanctuary.
Oh, I'm sorry, no speakers on that one.
All right, let's open doors.
No speaker, Your Honor.
Elsie Grace Warrior Retreat Foundation.
Yes, please come forward.
We welcome you tonight, you'll have up to three minutes if you'd like it, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Lynette Bakowski, and I'm the founder and CEO of something called Landing Zone Grace. Here, just to let you know this, I know there's been a lot of talk about it lately, it is a mission of the heart, it's not a rehabilitation center, it's not a mental health facility, it's not a facility at all. It is a family farm run by people who intimately know the challenges combat veterans and their families face. This idea came from my husband, he served as a Navy SEAL for 32 years, sorry, and he was intimately familiar, he died in 2010, and he saw what was happening to our combat veterans coming home from war, and decided that he needed a place, they needed a place of respite. He died before he was able to see that happen. I purchased a piece of property in Punggol, Virginia, and with the intent of running it as a family farm and inviting the war veterans to come in, special operation veterans to come in and find respite there, for a weekend, for seven days, for whatever they needed. It is really about sitting around a table, having meals with their brothers, fellowship around a fire pit, kayaking, fishing, having farm projects to do, garden projects, and to get some quiet and rest. We have 23 suicides a day in the military of people coming home, and it really needs to be put to a stop. We have so many divorces and so many families falling apart, and this is something that we can really do in the city of Virginia Beach, right here where you're surrounded by military, the entire military holds this place up. It is not, I want to make an important point here, not one activity that I want to do at Elsie Grace threatens or puts the revenue of the ARP program or the program going forward at risk. It is a farm, and it will always remain a farm, and I would, it would be a wonderful blessing to have the city of Virginia Beach government support the mission of providing respite to the warriors, and that's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hillary.
I really, this is only talking about, I didn't see this in the packet that we had from the Commissioner of Revenue as had been reviewed.
Because we weren't gonna act on it, I believe, because it wasn't in there to be acted on.
Right, it wasn't in there to be acted on, because this did have, I mean, we have to make sure what you're doing is compatible with zoning and the fact that the property sold ARP and all those things that you're aware of, so we are not endorsing all of that. This is just to have a public hearing on property tax exemptions, and we don't have that on for action tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Bobby.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, I was phoned and asked to endorse this program, and I'll tell you, it's a wonderful program, especially since that we as a community here in Virginia Beach value our military, and my hopes and prayers are that somehow, you know, that we don't get bogged down in some of the regulations that government imposes on us sometimes, and take a look at this project for the intent of which it is designed. And now, it's my understanding you're not gonna charge anybody for any of these things?
No, it is completely free to the veterans, to the warriors coming in, to their families, and I will say this also, the Virginia Beach Fire Department and the Virginia Beach Police Department Bomb Squad has been out there volunteering their time almost monthly. It was a foreclosed property when I bought it, it has now, it's now sparkling because of their hard work, and so I'd like to open it up to them on weekends as well, because they too experience trauma.
So in essence, you're opening up your home to company.
Correct.
And, you know, and I can understand perhaps some of the concerns about precedents and, you know, what it means, but I hate to think about the message we might send, that, you know, we have people like this woman here willing to open up her home and take some of these vets in, and they're active duty, they're going back, right?
Some of them are active duty, some of them are transitioning out of the military, but they need some respite in between in order to get back into life and their families.
Yeah, and, you know, not too far from your facility, you know, we have the Equa Kids, which also has Equa Vets.
Yes.
And, you know, I just think that, you know, we are the community of a lifetime, and if there is a way, shape, or form, you know, and I ask the attorneys that we could figure something out, that could be a win-win situation, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, I continue the public hearing for the acquisition and condemnation of property on Indian River Road and Givestville Road.
No speaker, Your Honor.
And the sale of restrictive easements Brenham Farm North Landing Road.
No speaker.
How about the consent agenda, Mr. Vice Mayor?
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances, item J1, which is ordinances to designate exemptions from local real and personal property taxes, A, Forever Home Sanctuary, Inc., and B, Let's Open Doors. Item 2, J2, which is ordinance to authorize acquisition of right-of-way for Indian River and Kimsville Roads and acquire temporary and permanent easements by agreement for condemnation. And the clerk would please note that I am personally abstaining on that particular item. Item 3, which is ordinance to declare under the encroachment partnering agreement a restrictive easement for property off North Landing Road and the inter-facility traffic area to be excess and authorized its sale to the United States Navy. Item 4, ordinance to authorize acceptance of any interest the Development Authority may have in London Bridge Creek to the city and grant permission to 2798 Dean LLC to encroach into a portion of London Bridge Creek. Item 5, an ordinance to authorize revisions to the Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan, rate persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities and homeless assistance, and the city manager to submit the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item 6, a resolution to authorize EMS permits, rate private ambulance service, A, Delta Medical Transport, Inc., and B, Heart Song Care Transport, Inc. Item 7, a resolution to appoint Jennifer Farr Brewer as Deputy City Clerk, to effective August 22nd, 2015. Item 8, ordinances to accept and appropriate, A, $2,600,000 to purchase 2272 Old Punggol Ferry Road, rate open space preservation, clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item. A, B, $192,100 in donations to Virginia Beach Home Now Foundation through Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, rate the Housing Resource Center. C, $65,000 from Virginia Criminal Justice Services to police, rate Internet Crimes Against Children, and D, $400 from the Fire Gift Fund, rate to Fire Station 9.
Open a public hearing for planning?
Do we have speakers on item 1?
One opposition.
Under planning for approval, item K2 is Studio Evolved LLC and Mount Trashmore Office, LLC for modification of conditions of conditional use permit, rate expansion of a tattoo parlor at 512 Independence Boulevard in the Rose Hall District. 3, application of 2798 Dean LLC for conditional use permit, rate bulk storage at 2798 Dean Drive in the Beach District. 4, Fun Spot Amusements LLC for conditional use permit, rate inflatable outdoor recreation at 304, 306, and 308 22nd Street, the Beach District. 5, La Ray Tucker and Krish Enterprises LLC for conditional use permit, rate a convenience store and fuel sales at 300 South Rosemont Road in the Beach District. 6, PF Hilltop and Regency Hilltop Associates, LLP for conditional use permit, rate a gym and fitness center at 1944 Laskin Road in the Beach District. 7, application of Mark and Kenny Samtani and Mahakal 1600 LLC for special exceptions for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code, rate a commercial building at A, 1602 Atlantic Avenue, and B, 2904 Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District. And item A, which is the city to amend section 111 of the city zoning ordinance, rate definition of family day care home. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call for the question, please.
And if I pronounce that name wrong, I apologize, folks, because...
Ten to zero, you have approved the items noting Mr. Jones's abstention and Mr. Moss's no vote.
Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to explain my no vote on the item to acquire the Old Punggol Ferry Road property, $2.6 million, that's an amount that's in excess of the tax assessment, and it's in excess of the appraisal the city received of the property, and I feel we're paying too much.
Mr. Jones.
I abstained on the item I abstained on because I own property very close to the acquisitions, and I felt it would be appropriate to obtain.
And I've got item K1, Victoria Park Homeowners Association, Inc., foreclosure of the right-of-way known as Guernsey Way regarding open space. We have one speaker?
Yes, Your Honor, Cory, Cory Ray, I can't read it, Larry King, I'm sorry.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, city council, we extend greetings from Victoria Park, just less than a mile down the road. We thank you for your service. As you may recall, Victoria Park has been a good partner with the city during the building of the Kellum High School. It's directly adjacent to our neighborhood, just separated by a fence line. Victoria Park is a small neighborhood, only one access point in and out of the neighborhood. As a member of the board, they've asked me to come this evening to talk to you, to ask you about a piece of common area property. Originally, before the Kellum High School project, this piece of property was given to the city in order to have a street between Kellum, or then Manchester Station, and Victoria Park. We maintain this area now, it's a grassy field with our landscaping contract, and although we have no control over it, the city still owns it. The reason we're pursuing this matter is because there's people from outside the community that have been loitering in our common area, and yet Victoria Park has no recourse to stop these people from coming in. these people from coming in because you still own the property. In fact, we can't even put up a no trespassing sign in our own common area. The school board has unilaterally installed a gate in the fence between Kellum and Victoria Park, which only will exacerbate the situation, yet they refuse to put up no parking signs until they do a study. We find the current arrangement unacceptable as it is, and we think it affects the safety and security of our community. The Planning Commission has no plan to relieve the pressure on the inadequate North Landing Road, therefore recommends denial of our request because they want to encourage traffic through our neighborhood. This is just wrong. Victoria Park is a small residential neighborhood with only one access in and out and cannot sustain increased traffic. The new school with 800 parking spots, school bus service is the right answer instead of encouraging students to walk along the dangerous North Landing Road to cut through our neighborhood or drive and park in our neighborhood. Victoria Park gave this land to the City of Virginia Beach in good faith. Since the land is not being used for the purpose intended, we expect in good faith to have this land returned to Victoria Park. We appreciate our partnership with the City of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight, sir. John?
I just want to acknowledge that Mr. King and I went to the senior class at the War College together, and I just want to acknowledge that good to see an alumni here this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Henley?
I don't have any questions.
Do I have a motion?
Were there other speakers or anything?
No.
Okay, well, I would like to ask Mr. Arnold some questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Arnold, we're glad to have you.
Great to be here. Thank you.
I think the issue simply goes back to concern from Victoria Park that perhaps children or students of Kellum will park in this neighborhood and to go to school. Have you all had complaints, or has that been a problem in the year-plus that Kellum has been there?
I can't speak personally to the complaints. I haven't had any. You know, we have ample parking on the Kellum High School site. You know, we've got in excess of 800 parking spaces. If you drive through the Kellum lot during a school day, you'll see, you know, you'll see empty parking spaces there. So, there is sufficient parking. You know, part of the problem goes back to where the old Kellum was, where you didn't have sufficient parking on a much smaller school site. I live in Rollingwood across the street from the old Kellum. And if you've got a 10th grader who may not have a parking pass, who's looking to drive his car, you know, they might park in the neighborhood. Mr. King made reference to no parking signs in the neighborhood. Your traffic engineering department has evaluated it, has indicated that if it does become a problem, which I personally don't think it will be, that they'll evaluate whether or not no parking signs need to be placed in the neighborhood, similar to where they were in Rollingwood. I don't expect that to be a problem in Rollingwood. So, I haven't heard, short answer, I haven't heard any problems as far as parking.
I know that there were problems with the fence because initially, when Kellum opened, you all just put a fence without a gate, and you had some problems with vandalism. And so, I think the issue is that now you all have installed a gate there, and that's why Victoria Park is asking to close this right-of-way so that they can control access through there. The vandalism with the gate, do you have any idea of the source?
The vandalism occurred when we had no gate, and it occurred on two or three different occasions where we had some individuals remove pickets from the fence so that not only kids, but adults could access the school site from Victoria Park. You know, if you stop and think about, you know, the write-up that your staff did is really excellent in terms of creating connections and what, you know, what we did when we planned this school. If you go out there now, you'll see a sidewalk running through the Guernsey Way right-of-way with a pedestrian connection to the school, not only for kids who live in Victoria Park to walk to school versus driving a bus into the neighborhood where you can, you know, you can literally see the school. You know, there's, there are public amenities, lit tennis courts. If you go out there in the evening, you'll see the tennis courts being used by residents of West Neck and other communities. You've got a rubber track surface that's used by the community. You've got open space and trails. It's a cross-country trail. So, it's not, it's more than just a school. It's a public amenity, and we're trying to make sure that we create connections between school sites and adjacent communities.
Well, I understand the background. I, you know, attended those initial charrettes, and I know that this was a concern in the neighborhood before Kellum was built. And I would just hope that if it does become a problem that there's parking in the, in the community, that you all will take action or will let me know so that we could make sure that we do get those no parking signs up, but...
Absolutely. Your traffic engineering folks are aware of it. And, you know, one other point that we've committed to the folks in Victoria Park that on school nights, that the gate will be locked at 10 o'clock by the evening custodian, will be opened by the morning custodian at 6:00 in the morning, that the gate will be closed for home football games where we have large events, but it'll be left open during the weekends.
So, you all intend to lock the gates?
Yes, ma'am. It's locked from our side.
Do you know how many, how many kids who attend Kellum are living in Victoria Park?
You know, I think last year it was eight. There, I know there are 50 school-aged children, K through 12, that live in that neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moss.
I have just one question. Given the inexpensive nature of surveillance and cameras, it's a very minor expense, it would seem to be often very much a deterrent, and when it doesn't deter, it does help you to prosecute. It seems to me like a good measure of good faith would be to see where on that property you could get a proximity view that would cast over that so you could better assure compliance and oversight of what takes place. And on our part, I would like to think when that sidewalk is a sidewalk to nowhere, is there something that prevents the city side from completing the sidewalk on our side of the gate? And it's kind of, when you look at that, the sidewalk comes right up to the gate.
No, it's in. We...
The picture didn't show that.
It's built now.
Okay, I haven't been out...
As part of our project, we physically removed Guernsey Way.
No, so it goes all the way in?
That's what you see right there.
How about, but when he showed the picture of the gate, go back to where the gate was?
That's before the sidewalk was finished.
Was that also an old picture?
There was no gate.
Okay, I see a sidewalk parked, okay, but that comes on that side? Okay, very good. But I do think that security camera could be a good idea.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Henley?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this has been an ongoing issue with Victoria Park, and I know they have a great deal of concern about having their neighborhood perhaps become a place for a lot of parking, and we will certainly watch that. But the whole basis of the transition area and development in the transition area when it was designed was connectivity and with a lot of trails and so forth. And so, this is, this is a major tenet of the transition area, and to have connecting trails to allow people to attend the amenities or to take part in the amenities and also then to go to other places. And of course, it's not the Planning Commission that's not planning to improve North Landing Road. It's the city council's policy because North Landing Road is just intended to remain or to become a sort of neighborhood connector when we do build the ultimate Nemo Parkway connecting all the way over to Indian River. So, that North Landing Road is not planned to be widened for that purpose, but there are just too many houses right along North Landing Road. It just cannot be widened and offer a sidewalk. And so, you know, to have the ability of all of that community to move around biking and walking and pedestrian, we need connections such as this that are off the road, plus the very fact that we have major utilities in that right-of-way. And I heard loud and clear from public utilities when I asked them that, hey, we've got some major stuff in there that we are going to have to maintain, and we really need this to stay in public ownership. And with the viewers recommending denial, I certainly think that's the appropriate thing, but we will commit to the people in Victoria Park that we're going to do our best to make sure that they don't have ongoing problems. So, I am going to move that we deny this application.
Have a motion? Motion in a second. Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
I have voted Tennessee Row. You have denied the application of Victoria...
Now, I'll move to appointments. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Agricultural Advisory Commission Diane F. Horsley, to the Clean Community Commission Beth Bailey, and El Marino, Kathleen M. Reed, and Christina M. Trapani. To the Human Rights Commission Gavin B. Molton, a senior at Prince San High School, and Reagan Bracknell, a junior at Prince San High School. To the Parks and Recreation Commission Lindsey Marie Taylor, a junior at Salem High School, and Hugh Tierney. To the Public Library Board Mary Lou P. Ablowich, Mary D. McGovern, and Clintise Plot. To the Review and Allocation Committee Kimberly Shepherd and Deborah Steiger. To the Southeastern Public Service Authority as an alternate representing the city, Mr. Phil Davenport, Director of Public Works. The Planning Council Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond. To the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation Richard By Miller and Wanda Cooper. To the Wetlands Board James T. Vale as a member. And to the 2040 Vision to Action Community Coalition Commission Cindy Aracco. And to the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee Elizabeth Deitzman.
Do I hear any other motions?
Hear none. I'll call for the question.
I have voted Tennessee Row. You have appointed those made appointments by the Vice Mayor.
Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? We will adjourn. Thank you all for your attendance.